And welcome everyone to the Valentine's Day twenty twenty two City of Walton Work Session. Uh, we have two exciting items on the agenda tonight. First up is the Boons Ferry Corridor Sidewalk and Bike Lane Project Update led by Mike McCarthy.
Well, good evening. So I am Mike McCarthy. I'm a Principal Transportation Engineer working for the city. And along with me is Katie Mangle. Uh, she's with Ulta Planning and Design and she's, they've been helping with everything on the Twelton Moving Forward Program. And on this project in particular, they've been helping a lot with getting out and talking to the people and really listening to, you know, ask the people what they want and listening to what we hear and helping us synthesize that into the project that we uh, have before you this evening. Uh, so I will share a PowerPoint. Uh, walking through a little bit about the project here. And as I'm just getting this set up. So you should be seeing the full uh, Food Fair Road Sidewalk and Bike Lane title slide. And uh, so as we mentioned. This has been a very important project for the community. Really, the idea came up back in two thousand seventeen, although I'm sure people have been talking about it for a long time before that. And this was project was featured in Measure thirty four two eighty two, which established the Twelton Moving Forward Fund Program. Uh, to address needs along Boons Ferry Road. From south of Twelton Sherwood Road all the way down to the city limits, south of the high school. Uh, so it's down at Norwood Road where it turns into a county road. And we've been out talking with the community quite a bit and we heard a lot about concerns about um, gaps or gaps in the like walking and biking system or places where if like if you're walking, you're on some somewhat decent, you know, walking routes. And then you get to a spot where it's really not a good place to walk. And same thing for biking where if you're trying to bike along the road. Um, you get to a spot where it's just feels really unsafe or scary, um, uncomfortable. And so then we've been out talking with the community uh, over most of this past year and we've had a lot of great conversations with a lot of people. And then we've synthesized that into the conceptual design of a project that we have here. And then the plan would be we'd be able to construct part of it this coming summer. And then some of it would take longer and we'd be constructing that in next year's construction season.
Mike, this is Bates. Uh, I'd like to interrupt. Your slide is truncated a little bit. It's being cut off at the Twelton High School and we're not seeing the twenty twenty three at the bottom. There you go.
All right. Is that all showing up now?
It is. Thank you.
Okay. So a lot of what we heard. You know, when we've been out talking with the people is really a Boons Ferry is a very important corridor. And I don't think this is new information, uh, but it's just so important to so many people in our community. Uh, there's a route to get between neighborhoods, a route to get north into downtown, south to the uh, freeway interchanges, uh, get to the high school, get to Byram Elementary or Twelton Elementary or some of the other destinations along it. And the people really want to invest in making it better and safer. And then we also heard a lot about uh, incomplete sidewalks and bike lanes or some of the condition of some of the walking paths or um, places that cause issues that make it less safe. So we heard a lot about the pathways. And people love the location of the pathways, particularly where they're they move away from the road like this, where you can, you know, walk more amongst the trees. And um, it's a much better walking experience than walking right along the road. But we heard about some places like this where we have trip hazards or some call them speed bumps uh, in the pathway that people trip over or puddles or places where uh, you know, vegetation's been growing across and under the paths. And you know, it's the pavement, you know, it's good to have, but it's reaching the end of its useful life in a lot of places. Uh, so it's starting to fall apart and get into disrepair. So we've been hearing a lot about how much people love the pathways. We've also been hearing about places where, you know, right here behind Byram Elementary, where there really isn't a sidewalk and you feel like you're walking kind of right along the edge of the road and it gets a little scary when people are going by at thirty-five miles an hour or more. And then we've been hearing about places where bike lanes end or they have some pretty rough things like catch basins in them and but they don't really feel very safe to ride. Uh, places where they're just missing. Um, so asking us to add. Uh, you know, widen the pavement out a bit to add a bike lane or asking us to do something to help make that more connected. Also hearing a lot about ramps. Um, hearing about people asking for more safe ways to cross Boons Ferry. Um, this is Iowa Street. We heard a lot about uh, the length of this particular crosswalk. People wanted that one. Uh, that just feels scary to try to walk across there. Uh, this is Apache, so it's up north of Sagert. Um, it's hard to cross there as well. And talking about corners and bus stops, some of them that are, you know, if you were in a wheelchair, how would you really wait at this bus stop? Uh, and some of the ramps that are pretty tough. You heard a lot about driveway crossings as well. That with a steep cross slope are really hard for people in wheelchairs to navigate. Because when they have a steep cross slope, it tends to push the chair out into the road. Which is especially scary as you can imagine. Um, we've also heard people being frustrated by just the sheer volume of cars and traffic and traffic congestion. In this case, this is a line backed up getting to Avery Street. Um, we also heard about the speed of traffic and, you know, sometimes having trouble uh, getting people to stop at a crosswalk. And so then we started asking people, okay, so here's some of the totals about how many people we managed to talk to in person. Um, how many people have responded to our surveys? And then are on our email lists and here's some of the things that we've asked on our website and gotten some other feedback about. And so we just kept hearing more about how much people really value this corridor. Uh, Katie, anything else you'd want to add about what we heard so far?
No, thanks, Mike. You did a great job of summarizing it. It was um, really fun to hear from so many people who had a lot to say and just were excited that the city was like having this conversation. So uh, I feel like from the very beginning, the beginning in twenty twenty, we were saying, is this the right project? Overwhelmingly, yes. And then in twenty twenty-one, it was tell us a little bit more and just people came out of the woodwork to talk to us. It was really neat.
Thank you. And so we heard so much about how important this road is, how much people want it fixed up, so many needs up and down the corridor. And then you may remember the phrase of we're an attractive risk. Uh, and Don Hudson mentioned that and we were talking about the amount of funding for the program and that when uh, Don and the finance folks were selling the bonds, that because we are an attractive risk and yes, I do want to have T-shirts made up with that saying on it. Uh, that our bond sale ended up raising quite a bit more money than we originally thought. Uh, about four million more is the, was the estimate. So our recommendation, because this project is on such an important corridor, there's so many needs. Uh, we recommend using that additional funding on this corridor. And uh, to complete the whole project. So this is some of what we're looking at. And then maps out all the needs and I realize it's too small to really see here. Uh, but it's improvements throughout the corridor from Twelton Sherwood Road. Uh, south of Iowa Drive, the Norwood Road where it transitions from being a city street to a county road. And zooming in a little bit more so you can see a little bit more of uh, what's recommended. A lot of the improvements are replacing existing sidewalks that are in poor condition or have driveway crossings that have severe slopes. Uh, replacing curb ramps. Um, the first block near Twelton Sherwood Road, we believe that we can get in a bike lane within the existing curb lines by shifting some of the existing travel lanes, narrowing up the median that's up in that area. Uh, proposing a crosswalk down near Apache and then proposing improving the pathways where they are. And improving the pathways particularly as they are where they're away from the road. To really keep that, you know, being able to walk among the trees feature instead of feeling that you're walking along a road. That was one of the questions we asked the people at each of the events was, would you rather fix up the existing path? Or would you rather we build a sidewalk along the road? And the answer is very strongly on the side of fix up the existing paths. They'd rather walk away from the road a little more. Um, we are proposing um, a few roadway improvements. Um, at Avery, looking at the possibility of getting a right turn lane in there. And then north of Sagert, north of Marquee, there's one spot where the turn lane disappears in the center for about a hundred feet or so. Are looking at addressing that. Uh, but most of it focuses on walking and biking facilities along the road. Um, some improvements in some bus stops, places where we can make that a little better. Uh, and then and enhanced crosswalk down at Iowa Drive and that particularly long crossing there. Uh, so that's part of the plan. And it would include over three thousand feet of newer replaced sidewalks or pathways. A couple of miles of new bike lane or newly marked bike lane. Uh, two additional enhanced crosswalks in Apache and Iowa, nine improved bus stops. And compliant corner ramps at a lot of different places. Um, most of these locations are not actually in Twelton, so I know I always try to, when I see a picture, I try to guess where it is. Uh, that's a lot of what we'd be looking at with the different funding here. And then we have a campaign planned. To tell the community about the project and about what we heard from them and what we plan to do to address the concerns and the things that we heard. So Katie can walk us through a little bit of that.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Um, so essentially, this is the beginning of a campaign here tonight. You are the first group to really see these maps and hear the stories. So it's really good news, I think, for most people that we thought we were going to be talking with the community about how to prioritize the investments. But with the recommended approach, we actually think we can, we want to do all of the investments and address all of the risks or all of the issues. So it's a pretty incredible project spanning, you know, this huge swath of the city. And it's an area where people are already doing an awful lot of walking and biking and taking the bus. And so it's going to also just walking back and forth across, you know, the street to get to parks and visit their neighbors. So um, really excited about the extent of all of the improvements that we can um, give done in the next two years. So Mike, you want to go to the next slide? Uh, so the, the plan, this uh, we're going to have a little communications uh, campaign starting next week. Uh, this time, we're not going to be asking for responses and there's no survey attached to this one. This one is really sharing the excitement and the good news of, hey, you know what? You told us that your street was, the street was broken in so many different ways. Well, guess what? We're fixing this. And really tying it to some specific um, places that people told us about and that we know are the, the bond, because of the bond funding, we'll be able to upgrade these exact places. So this is the area um, south of Avery that Mike uh, showed you um, all those potholes and speed bumps. We're fixing this. Like this is a path that would be reconstructed uh, so that it would deal with all of the root damage and it would be a nice clean concrete path. Next slide. And here again, this is where right by Byram Elementary School, the bike lane just drops. So we're fixing this. We're going to just add a little bit of scooch, scooch, a little bit more of asphalt in there to be able to add, make this a buffered bike lane. So it would be continuous. We were talking with the principal of this wall. They're just thrilled about all this. Um, making this, the sidewalk will be in pathway to the, you see on the edge there will also just be improved to make sure everything is ADA accessible meets ADA. Uh, next slide. Uh, here again, there's, there's just a little bit further south uh, near or see right near Byram Elementary where there's just no sidewalk at all. So this is an area where we'd be adding new, new sidewalk in addition to just striping um, a buffered bike lane. And thank you. And one more. So this is where um, a site, a pathway that's degraded and it's, it's being encroached upon by the adjacent um, all the vegetation is just not, not really okay, not up to standards and not really up to Twelton's expectations. So this is where uh, this path would be replaced with a more standard sidewalk. So it's not removing any of the trees or anything, but um, making a nice clean sidewalks or everybody can get through there safely. And yeah, I think this is the last one. So at that um, at Iowa, we did a demonstration project. Some of you might have been there to really show people what it would look like to add a little bit of a curb extension because this point of the street is extra wide. Even if, you know, Boons Ferry wide isn't already hard, hard enough to cross. There's like extra asphalt there that isn't a turn lane or isn't, isn't really parking, isn't used for anything. So we're going to add a curb extension. And the rapid flashing beacons, the pedestrian activated wrapping beacons that will help people get across at this crosswalk. So this is another place. We heard, you know, some people weren't totally sold on this idea. So we might have some continued conversation, but an awful lot of people um, wanted to see this happen and we heard uh, heard from the majority of people supported that option. So this is a location. Again, we heard it's so hard to get across the street. So we're fixing this. We're going to um, add, you know, improve it uh, in, in the next year. And so the campaign will be to share these types of um, those, th- those uh, messages on yard signs in social media and in an email list and uh, message and also postcards so that everybody up and down the corridor knows that this is happening. It's really happening. We're going to start going to construction. And you know, the good news that we were able to fund all of the improvements. Um, go ahead to the next slide. Thank you, Mike. So we're still, you know, public involvement has really continued from the very beginning of the project in twenty twenty. Now, as we start um, looking, you know, to design is about sixty percent, start looking to construction starting in um, the summer of twenty twenty-two. So after this campaign, letting everyone know what's, what's, what's going on, then we'll follow up with letters to individual property owners where, you know, if the sidewalk is being rebuilt and it's right at um, and some, near somebody's property, we're going to just say, hey, like, let's talk a little bit more, share a little bit more information and we'll move to that phase of um, public involvement that is a little bit more about just direct communication with anybody who might be, you know, affected, even if it's like just heads up, there might be people, you know, working in front of your house. So uh, really excited to, to keep that going. The boontsferirod.com um, has been a part of the project all along and it has, it has now been updated to show the proposal so that as with anybody, you know, whether they're a property owner or just a someone who uses a bus stop or anybody who uses the street can always go there and zoom in and understand uh, exactly what might be changing. So that'll continue to be an important communication tool for us. All of that is going to launch uh, over the next week.
Thank you, Katie. And I think as we're going through and working out the final details, this is what we call a context sensitive design where we really try to fit in the needs, fit in what's necessary to meet the needs of the people with minimal disruption. So it's sort of a custom design solution, really each block of the road. Yeah, with that, uh, like asking, is any questions or comments? I assume I should stop sharing so we all can see each other.
All right, questions? I see uh, Councilor Pratt then Council President Grimes.
Well, this is one of my big things when I was on Tea Park. So I'm so excited about this because having a continuous, especially along Boon's Ferry where we have schools and neighborhoods connecting to our downtown area. But having this continuous and safer path for pedestrians and bikes is just wonderful. And I live in this neighborhood by all this and I walk this all the time with my dog and I'm amazed that everybody's identified almost every little issue there is. So um, thanks for your hard work and I'm really excited to see this come to fruition.
Great, thank you.
President Grimes.
Thank you. I'm excited to see this and I love that we've had so much um, input from the community because you can tell in all the little areas where we need the little add-ons and improvements. Um, I just wanted to kind of dovetail on something, Katie, that you had mentioned. Um, because on Boon's Ferry, there's some places where it looks like residences, fences or part of their front or backyard right up to the road easement. Are we going to have to work with any of the property owners to work on easements or is it going to cost us anything? Are we going to have um, fees or unexpected things that we're going to have to work on for that? Sorry.
Yeah, we will be, there will be locations where we'll need to acquire some right of way. Uh, clean up some easements or places where the existing sidewalk is actually outside the right of way line. Uh, or places like that. We've tried to budget for those costs. So we believe we have them covered. But you know, there's always some uncertainty with those negotiations, but there are some places we'll have to acquire property. We tried to
Yeah, thanks, Mike. And also note that we've also accommodated that in the schedule. So you know, um, in the beginning, the schedule showed that we're some things were going into construction in the summer and some will go the summer of twenty twenty-three. The difference between what will go when is largely because of that issue that you just named. It takes a little time to work through any issues with right of way. So but we're allowing some time for that to happen too.
But of the property owners that we've talked to, at least up to this point, we don't expect any issues or trouble, do we?
I'm not aware of any that I expect trouble from. Uh, but we, we never know with property negotiations.
Thank you. I love it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I guess our Councilbrooks hand out.
I also want to say thank you. I'm close by there often and um, I'm especially excited about um, the opportunity for right-hand turn lane on Avery. I think that's going to be helpful for traffic. Um, and this seems like, oh, there's two things that are, these are just thoughts that I have. Um, one is um, walking in the path where the trees are. I sometimes don't even walk there just because there's more noise and um, traffic, traffic so often on Boon's Ferry Road. Um, and I was just curious if there has ever been thoughts of more buffering there with plants and trees. And my other question was kind of dovetailing on um, Council President Grimes's question with if there were unexpected costs or if some of this work goes out further to with um, with um, either se- either place where this ends, like further south or further north. If um, if we ever can supplement what we're doing with community development block grants, because when I work on that committee with PAB, there are um, schools, when schools are involved and those kind of places, they just seem like really ripe opportunities. So um, it just throwing it out there, not saying anything's wrong or anything like that, but just um, this, this term, we only had one application from one city for community development grants for those kind of constructions. So um, the last couple of years, it hasn't been as competitive and I just want to give a heads up in case there's ever some connecting money that might help.
That's good. I just made a note of that. Uh, thank you very much. I think that's something really good for us to keep in mind as we work through this.
Uh, Councilor Hillier.
Uh, thank you for the awesome presentation. And I'm wondering um, if on Boon's Ferry, you're talking about where, you know, there's so much traffic and that's part of the issue for pedestrians to get back and forth. Well, as drivers, right, it's frustrating to stop every fifty feet for the flashing light of pedestrians also, and it kind of messes with traffic flow. I'm wondering if there's ever been any consideration of a bridge to just go up and over so it wouldn't have to stop traffic. I guess we see that a lot on the East Coast where, where I'm from anyway. And so I just wondered if I'm sure that costs more money than a light, but it also seems like it might serve a couple of purposes.
Well, um, I'll jump in there then. So that, sometimes that is a great um, alternative. All of the corners are already existing, you know, legal crosswalks. So having a bridge could be an alternative. Those generally work at places where there's really high demand, like in a transit station or, you know, rail station or places like that. The demand in, on this corridor is pretty fairly evenly spread out throughout the corridor. So unless you're going to do it at every, you know, not every single corner, but you know, ev- every five hundred to eight hundred feet, you'd end up with a situation where people would still just probably dart across the street instead of, you know, taking the time to go up and over. Um, so it was anyways, there's a, there's a number of reasons like that, but it wasn't an option that we looked at for this program. Um, and largely because it was always defined as being improving the, you know, sidewalks and bike lanes and in, in doing things that grade as part of the bond program.
Thank you. I just think that we should consider the traffic flow in the conversation though.
Yeah, yeah. And it
It turns me if there's higher volume of pedestrians that go back and forth, maybe at some point that might be eligible for it is all.
Yeah, I think there are a few places where we're looking at where we can also make the um, ma- maximize the green time on Boon's Ferry and things like that to, you know, see if we can come up with some win-wins. Yeah.
That's part of what we're looking at. Avery is, yeah, by including right turn lane, be able to get more green for Boons. And typically it's the signals that are the bottlenecks that really slow the traffic down. And so we, some of strategically chose the places for the crosswalks where um, they're not too far away from signals that already limit traffic more than you think the crosswalk will. So I think, I think that should address the concerns. But thank you.
Are questions or comments? I've just got one, uh, Katie and Mike, um, on Iowa. Uh, I'm definitely hearing you had a need for the possession crosswalk, but I'm also hearing, I, I know you've heard this. So uh, from the folks who live in the two neighborhoods who are trying to get from their neighborhood onto Boon's Ferry, uh, that there was a request for a light to be put there instead. Uh, what's the thinking about crosswalk versus a, a traffic light?
Mike, you're going to take this?
Sure. Yeah, I think the uh, what we're seeing out there, it is tough getting out from Iowa, particularly turning left, you know, it's, has, if everyone's aware. I don't think we're seeing the volume of traffic there to meet the typical like national traffic signal warrants. Um, and so it's typically not recommended to install a signal there until we get even more uh, traffic than we have now. Um, so there's concern about safety uh, with signals in that kind of a situation. You know, people end up stopping. Uh, so we did. You know, it's something that can be considered more. Uh, we did take a look at at this point, we're not seeing the traffic volume in Iowa to really justify adding the whole signal. Uh, we're assuming, you know, the need to help cross.
Right. Uh, because I just, I know folks, like you said, there's a challenge sometimes getting out there. And then uh, you know, as council's favorite, uh, throwing aside here is the Basalt Creek Bridge. And a impact on increased traffic on Boon's Ferry Road, they may result if this bridge is ever built.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, so it's something to consider. I mean, uh, but yeah, I just, I know, because we, we, we changed our minds on the traffic light here on Twelton Road because of the same thing, because of traffic volumes. And that you're reevaluating the funds for this area over around uh, Jergens and so, but I know there's criteria for lights, but sometimes people don't want to hear that, but we got to explain it like. There.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilor Sacco.
All right, I didn't hear. Um, thank you. And uh, Mayor, you just sparked a, um, a quick comment. Uh, I, I can, I can almost see when um, the Basalt Creek uh, community goes in, Norwood might even need a light. So you might want to even for, think forward that we had a light at Norwood and Iowa, that might be a, a lot in that short, short time period. But I could see more traffic coming through on Norwood once that community is built, because then you'll have two um, neighborhoods flowing on to Norwood, the one, the existing neighborhood. And then the, I assume there's going to be an access point from the new neighborhood and on to Norwood as well. So. So maybe just forward thinking of where that traffic flow is going to be and maybe where, um, some traffic lights are going to be and what traffic light makes more sense as well.
Good point.
That is part of the consideration. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Council Brooks, that'll be the last one, because we gotta get Jonathan up next.
I just had a really quick question with the curb extensions for the crosswalk. That, does that make it so that it's faster for people to cross the street so that traffic is? Yes.
It does. That's one of the big benefits is it makes it, lets you to cross the street faster or spend less time kind of between the curbs in the pedestrian danger zone.
Thanks. Yeah. I think that's a good thing to remember too, in that discussion with Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, so it sounds like we're positive on moving forward this and going ahead with letting the people know about the project.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think you're gonna make a lot of folks happy with a vast majority of this project as, uh, Councillors are saying this. I think this is long awaited for. I think people are gonna be very excited on.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. And Katie, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right. Uh, moving on to our second item on the agenda is our 2021 Economic Snapshot as Prosperity Planning, uh, briefing led by Jonathan Taylor. Welcome, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's good to see you again. I apologize. I look like a sportscaster because this is what Bates give me in order to hear you. So tonight I have the privilege and pleasure to present the 2020, 2020 and 2021 Economic Snapshot for the City of Twallington. In your agenda packet, your staff report contains a much more in-depth data set and narrative that I thought maybe working with Cheryl and Don, that it would provide a little bit more insight than what the publication that you got, that will also be on the website as well. So those, both of those are in the agenda packet to give you a more in-depth, uh, picture of what Twallitons went through. So, uh, just a quick word, the, the snapshot report includes data both from the year 2020 and 2021. And it's going to be a little bit skewed on both of those reports because 2020 is the latest data that we have from the Oregon Department of Employment. And then 2021 is basically the retail market. So some of them will be a little bit, um, dissimilar, but hopefully it gives you kind of a shed on what is happening in Twalton. And also 2020 was the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I will share my screen. All right. So, uh, according to City Council's 2030 vision, the vision for economic development is a thriving and diversified economy that includes living wage jobs, increased tourism and sustained financial stability for the whole community. This is one of the key tenants of the Economic Strategic Plan that was adopted in 2014. So where is our real estate market at currently? Um, not much has changed since the last time I gave this presentation in 2019. Uh, even though the COVID-19 pandemic has readjusted the market a lot, the retail market still remains strong with only a 2.7% vacancy rate. Our total square footage inventory for all of Twallitons, about 1.3 million, and that hasn't changed since 2019. As has been the historic case for Twalliton, the industrial market is very strong. Um, we have 12.2 million uh, total square footage for inventory. And then currently we have 232,000, uh, square footage under construction and our vacancy rate's 2.5%. And those little arrows that are going up or down, that is the net over this time last year. So, uh, vacancy rates are dropping for industrial. And the office market, um, has remained relatively stable, 1.3 million and 11.7% vacancy. And to give you just a little bit of backstory on that vacancy rate in 2019, it was 13.2%. So our vacancy rate has decreased. So we're seeing positive moves. And also this is comparable to the suburbs that are in this region. Some quick numbers, um, according to the unemployment rate of November 2021, uh, Twallitons unemployment rate was 2.6%. And that was compared to, uh, Washington County's a 3.5 and then Oregon at 4.4%. Last year, we had 148 new business license that resulted in 985 new employment opportunities. In 2020 and 2021, the city, uh, distributed $1.2 million in COVID relief funds for both small businesses and childcare scholarships. Uh, of December of last year, we conducted a business survey of those businesses that receive funds, just to see the general mood and where they're at. 93% of those businesses are still in business. Uh, 89% of the respondents still stated that they're in, still impacted by COVID-19 and 68% had a positive economic outlook. In 2019, the City of Twalliton conducted an industry cluster analysis and without getting too much into the weeds, what it does is it looks at traded sector versus local sector clusters that are competitive nationally. Traded means we export and take money in and local means local money is spent locally and it's circulated within the economy. And so in the 2019 econo-, uh, the cluster analysis, we identified six clusters. Here you'll see five because we merged food and processing with advanced manufacturing to be more in line with our regional counterparts through GPI, which is the Greater Portland, um, Inc. So with our update and inside your, um, agenda packet, you'll see that the Twalliton clusters represent 54% of our workforce. And the average salary across all traded sector clusters is 76, or yeah, 76,000. And to go a little bit into the industry clusters update. So our first industry cluster is software and technology and our largest employers within that cluster is Lam Research, TAC Pro, Ichor System, Dealer Spike and JAE. Uh, point of information, Dealer Spike is no longer located in the City of Twalliton. They grew and located in the City of Wilsonville. But as such, it's 2020 data, so we'll put that on there. Um, the cluster employment for this is 13% of our entire workforce. Uh, we have about 4,000 who are employed in this industry. And the average salary is over 110,000. Uh, where we were from 2016 to 20 now, um, 40% increase in employment, uh, 18% increase in salary wages and then 11% decrease in firms. And what that is, is either firms consolidate, readjust or reclassify their NASIS code. So we don't exactly know why that occurred, um, because we, we don't have that information. Our second industry cluster update is the transportation and logistics cluster that represents about 11% of our cluster employment. We have roughly 3,500 that is employed in this cluster. In the average, uh, salary per year is 63,000. Our largest employers are UPS, DPI Specialty Foods and Columbia Corrugated Box. It is important to note that since our original cluster analysis, we've had a 5% increase in employment, 7% increase in salary and 2% decrease in firms. Twallitons pivotal cluster that has been historic to our region, uh, is advanced manufacturing. Our largest employers is CS Group, which is Nortech, uh, Campbell Soup Supply, which was the former Pacific Foods and Pacific Motion and Milgard Manufacturing and KAI USA. We have nearly 4,000, uh, of those individuals employed, uh, represents 13% of our uh, total workforce and the average salary is 60,000. Uh, food processing is the fast and growing industry in Twalliton. We had 11% decrease in unemployment and 15% increase in salary. Um, like the decrease in firms, um, with those consolidation of firms moving out throughout the region and just general market dynamics right now. That's probably one of the reasons why we had a decrease in employment. Our, our fourth, yeah, our fourth cluster is corporate and financial. Uh, this represents about 5% of our total workforce. We have about 1,500 employed with an average salary of 84,000. It is the largest annual salary increase of any industry cluster. Uh, we had a 49%, of 49% and then 15% increase in firms. Uh, our largest employers are AKS Engineering and Portland General Electric. And health and wellness, it is 12% of our total employment with about 3,600, uh, employees. The average salary is 66,000. 14% increase in salary and an 8% increase in firms. Our largest employers are Legacy Meridian, Center for Autism, Bay Club and Kaiser. And it would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the healthcare workers and their contributions over the last two years. In your agenda packet and also in the, uh, publication, you'll have a little bit more in-depth analysis of why certain of these have changed. What was the difference between 2016 and, uh, current? The City of Twalliton has three investment areas, um, and these investment areas are usually uh, marked by either a zone code or some sort of development, whether that be a road or general zoning classification. 124th Central Industrial and the I-5 Corridor. As you can see, um, we had a lot of investment, uh, last year in the 124th Corridor, we had 151 million of private investment. And in the I-5 Corridor, we had 100, uh, excuse me, 65 million. In the City of Twalliton total, we had $180 million of completed projects, 79 million under construction and 54 million, uh, planned. And as we move into 2022, just like what Mike McCarthy was doing for transportation, we are also working with community development as well as public works and engineering to complete council's goals of further investing in the Basalt Creek, um, Leventon and the I-5 Corridor. So just to recap what we did last year, uh, city, the city council adopted the Southwest and Basalt Creek Development Area Plan. It established 717 acre investment area exclusively zone, commercial and industrial. Uh, the Development Commission, uh, has dedicated up to $55.5 million to identified infrastructure projects in the areas of small business assistance, land acquisition, developer assistance, water, road and sewer infrastructure development, trail development and natural resource protection. Um, and the plan term to complete all those is 30 years. In addition to the Basalt Creek, uh, City Council dedicated $3 million of Leventon funds in the Leventon Tax Increment District to expand Herman Road. Right now they're still in complex design and stakeholder and property owner negotiations with spring of 2023 being the estimated construction to begin with estimated completion date of fall of 2023. And the potential, so as we continue moving forward, council indicated last year that they wanted to look at the broader northern area of accomplishing city council goals of access to housing, helping small businesses, uh, improving transportation and establishing community identity. And so staff is currently working with you as well as the broader public to identify how best to leverage potential funds to invest in this area for future goals to help accomplish, um, coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. As our community continues to grow, we understand that development constraints are going to present challenges for long-term prosperity. Uh, the ability of land and transportation infrastructure is limited. In addition, uh, the modernization and transition of our economic landscape will continue to present opportunities and challenges for long-term use. This prosperity planning effort has identified up to 500 acres of commercial, office and residential land. Uh, this directly ties in to the previous work the City Council done with the housing, uh, needs analysis and economic opportunities analysis, as well as the housing production strategy. Staff will be back on February 28th to go more in-depth about the prosperity planning process and to get feedback on confirming your goals and priorities about this area, as well as looking to the future about any kind of unidentified, um, projects, plans or priorities that council may have. And I wanted to leave plenty of time for questions, uh, but that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jonathan. That terrific presentation as usual. Love, always love your graphics. All right. Questions for Jonathan? Councilor Pratt.
Hey Jonathan, I have to say really quick, thanks for all you've done to get, um, help our businesses through the last few challenging years, your creative ideas. But, um, I was looking through the packet and it's on page 30, but it shows our, um, it's comparing the retail market, um, cost per square foot of Twalliton and Portland metro area. And am I reading it correctly that Twallitons actually like, looks like, uh, 26, $27 for square foot as opposed to the metro areas like lower than we are, like just over $20?
Yeah. So we're a little bit higher than the Portland metro region for retail per square footage. And a lot of that has to, and we have to be careful to apply the smaller retails with the larger boutique retail of Bridgeport, Nyberg Woods and Rivers. So it includes everything.
Okay, that makes sense, more sense to me than. Great. That was my question.
All right. Other questions for Jonathan? All right. Uh, Council Brooks.
I don't have a question. Actually, I've got a comment. I also want to thank you for your work, Jonathan, on this. I'm really excited about the prosperity plan and learning, you know, looking at this more. Um, and, um, and also the work with the CARES Act. And I had read something recently about how well Washington County distributed our funds, which has been the conversation nationally around the CARES Act. And I just wanted to really give, uh, a shout out to you because I'm really proud of how we've managed these monies compared to other areas across the country. And I guess my, I do have one quick question is I know that the economy is good nationally and how do we compare? Um, do you know compared to national average?
So I don't have those numbers, but I can definitely pull those and that wouldn't be hard. It could be a follow-up.
That'd be great. I'd love to hear about it the next, uh, time we see you. Thanks for coming.
Other questions or comments? I have a question for Jonathan. Um, Jonathan, I, on a lot of Greater Portland Inc. calls and the Small Cities Consortium. And my concern I have is, you know, when we see decreases in our, you know, highly priced sectors and losing, uh, companies who grow to adjoining communities. And, uh, for instance, we all know about, you know, Lam had a growth opportunity and we couldn't accommodate that growth here in Twalton. So they opened a, you know, office on side pole, but it's on the Sherwood side of side pole. So Jonathan, what in your, uh, crystal ball, um, develop land in Twalton and the stock that we have, and taking in effect that we have this new urban renewal zone down at Basalt Creek, do you foresee that we'll be able to attract the businesses that we want to attract here in town in our traded sectors and/or allow for growth of our existing companies who are just knocking out of the ballpark?
Yeah. So through community developments work, um, they identified roughly 175 acres that we were deficient in commercial and 74 acres that we were deficient in industrial. You're correct that Basalt Creek will help drastically meet the needs of commercial and industrial development. Um, I think that's one of the reasons why council, um, adopted the Basalt Creek Plan was to help further the infrastructure development. For this area, um, that you're going to be looking at on February 28th will also help, uh, remedy those. As for the specific question, um, right now, and this is something that, you know, you know, Bruce and now you know Matt from Wilsonville. We understand that we have more of an insular economy. we have more of an insular economy within just these three communities. About four, about twenty-two percent of our workforce commutes within this region, so it's pretty insular. Because we don't have a lot of building space, we are where firms from Portland come to grow, but then we are the community where we can't handle all that growth. And Brew Doctor is a pretty good example of that. I mean, they started out in a basement on um in East Portland, they moved here. Luckily, in twenty nineteen, we could accommodate that growth, but they acquired a substantial second building through that mattress, that former mattress building next to them. We're, we're quick, we're click quickly running out. I'm not gonna say otherwise, but we, we are trying internally and also in the region to develop plans of how can we best accommodate. And Mayor, you heard through small cities that it, it's going to be a push through the small cities to really make Metro understand that we do have urban reserves for those potential developments and we need to be uh regional partners and help meeting the needs of what is required by the state through Goal Nine and Goal Ten.
The nasty little term, the urban growth boundary discussion is going to be popping on our radars here soon because a lot of communities are feeling pressure for both residential and commercial land. Counselor Sacco and I were in a discussion this morning about, you know, uh, what is the future of urban growth boundary in Washington County? And the need to, you know, balance uh the goals in the Oregon State, you know, constitution, but also with the, the growth we're having here in the metro area, so. It's a constant struggle. We know, we had this, you know, the big discussion just a week or two ago on Intel deciding to locate in Ohio because there weren't a thousand developable acres anywhere in the metro area or in the state to build their new fab. So I think we're going to be having this discussion in the future. Not that we ever land something like that, that'd be great. We don't have a thousand acres. But, you know, I want to keep those businesses that are doing great here in Twalton, you know, and they want to grow, I want them to grow here. Keep the jobs here, keep people happy here, but also attract, you know, new future businesses. So we're gonna have to keep, you know, monitoring, you know, the great job Jonathan's doing. But also, you know, our, our biggest hurdle, you will, is develop land and the ability to build facilities that these businesses need to afford our residents, you know, family wage jobs. So anything else for Jonathan? All right, well, thanks a lot, Jonathan, for uh taking some time out tonight to talk to us.
Thank you. I'll see you guys next time.
All right. Okay, with that, I think that brings us to our council media agenda review communications and our round table. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I think that's uh Counselor Hillier, you're on board for that tonight. All right, and how, and then uh we have the employee of the year proclamation. Who would like to do that for Tom? I knew that answer was going to be Counselor Pratt. All right, uh, any questions or concerns with something on the eight items we have on consent? Okay, it looks like everyone's okay with it. Uh, and then what am I missing here? I think that's, we got the pledge, we got the COVID. All right, uh, with that, I'll go ahead and start the council round table of latest and greatest events. And Counselor Pratt's the first person on my screen.
Oh, okay. Um, I went to C four meeting and as you can imagine, most of the discussion was about that nice letter we got. We sent a letter, C four sent a letter to the Oregon Transportation Commission. We got a response that was very vague. I sent it to everybody, but um, that didn't really answer anything. And it was from a staff person, so it, like OTC didn't even address it. And so there was not much happiness in the group. We talked a little about the Regional Transportation Plan Amendment. What, what that is, is there's to go ahead with the tolling on two oh five, there needs to be an amendment to the Regional Transportation Plan that Metro has to approve. It will first go to J-PAC and they will kind of advise Metro on how they feel. And um, it's not so much what's in the amendment, but the um, general consensus I'm hearing, and I'll find out more in the next couple of days here, is that um, the group feels that um, this is the only time they really have left to have some input about this. It's not the wording of the amendment, it's the timing and having no future time to really have impact, so it's about in place. So that's that. Um, um, oh, we have the, last Monday, we um, Counselor Brooks and Counselor Reyes and I met with some T Park people for the Council of Advisory Appointments and we had some very impressive candidates. And um, the only other thing was, oh, I went to Stafford Hamlet meeting and um, they talked about tolling and they're really concerned actually about um, Lake Oswego on Stafford Road is redoing the golf course, putting in a swimming pool and putting in a park right there with a skate park right at Rosemont. So they're, they're more concerned about issues with Lake Oswego right now. That's it.
All right, thank you. Counselor Brooks?
Hey, everybody. Um, we had the consortium, the uh Regional Water Providers Consortium on February second and um, we um had to take another look at the consortium budget um, because of changes in estimates for staff, which those changes were approved, so we were a little, we were at like five point three percent increase and we went to five point nine percent increase, so um, just so you guys know that. And then there was a um, presentation with um, Andrew Phelps from the, oh, Oregon Office of Emergency Management, which is a really interesting department. It used to be under like armed services, sort of homeland security type stuff, and it's gone to its own thing and it's more funded. And I kind of talked about this before where we were seeing if there's any way that we could get support from funding through there. And we are gonna work more collaboratively with them and he gave, it was a very good presentation. And then the direct funding for water consortium is through ODOT, which I mentioned before. So just learning more about how it all works, and I think they're going to take another look at what this plan is, especially with water and sewer and how it was developed and if there's some updating that can go on because it's kind of um, as you can hear, kind of antiquated. And um, we, we also did the approval of the um, PAB for the Community Development Block Grants and the Home Grants. And the good news is with, there weren't a ton of applicants, so we had the opportunity to fund pretty fully every um, application except for one. And there are several projects, two home grants, which is um, affordable housing in the Twalton Transportation Triangle, so that area. And then there's also another building program in, I mean, Tigerd. And then there's another building program in Tigerd for um, homeless supports and housing. Um, and we also, for the first time, um, funded Family Promise, which might have somebody's ears perk up. Uh, smile. Um, so was it really, it's really interesting. And the good news around the Tigerd funding is just to have more resources at this under the county. So that's why I bring that up and bring it to your attention, um, because it's notable. And oftentimes, we, in the past, we've seen a lot of funding go, as you can imagine, towards Hillsborough and Beaverton area. Um, and then finally, some tougher news on that front. Is that Jenny Proctor announced that she's going to be retiring, not for six months. I know. She's been there um, as the director of that program for twenty-six years. And uh, I have to say, she makes, and I know that the mayor will agree with me on this. She makes it very much of a pleasure to go to that meeting and her dedication has been outstanding. And one of the things that she said was that she wants to travel, that she wants to work uh, do some work in disaster areas and other fun things. So that just kind of shows you her dedication to service. She's not just, um, she never just phoned it in. So um, she gave a good long time, six month notice for um, for a good search for a replacement person. But um, that was some tough news. And um, and it's things I thought you should know. Um, there was also a joint meeting that I was unable to go to between um, the Arts Advisory Committee and the Parks Department focusing on the Veterans Memorial Park. So that work, you know, is underway as we all know. Um, let's see, PAB meeting, I think that, and then um, Counselor Pratt mentioned the um, the advisory appointment. So I just want to also thank everyone that applies to serve on our committees and um, and think about other ways of volunteering in the city. And uh, in also just want to recognize February two as Black History Month and just giving a shout out to our community. There will also be an upcoming proclamation or two for um, around affordable housing and the work from the PAB, so expect that to be coming. And um, I also want to give a shout out to our new Public Works Director, I'm spacing right now, and Nick, because they're meeting with me more about the Water Consortium. And hopefully we can calendar a little bit more around awareness when the consortium's doing things and um, and dovetail it with uh, informing the community and, and you guys. So the next thing that they do is um, check for leaks and they do little testing kits for toilets that kids can do with dye to make sure that your toilet's not leaking. And that's one really good way of conserving energy. And as the mayor said, as we have all this growth in this area, it's really important um, to take really good care of our resources so that we can accommodate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hillier?
I, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Sacco?
Thank you. Um, I met with a WRWC um, last week. We went over updates to the website, uh, financial statements and budget approvals for this next year. We also went over updates about the Willamette River Basin Review feasibility study. If anybody's interested in that, let me know. Uh, and just a couple reminders of uh, some things going on to make sure that you're communicating to your networks. We are currently accepting applications for the Equity Committee Planning Group and those are due March eleventh. So uh, you have the ability to circulate through that through uh, your networks. If uh, you could please do that, that would be appreciated. And then also the Twalton Park Survey um, is currently active. Where we're asking for community members to weigh in on possible park priorities. If the bond, if we, if we decide to do a bond uh, funding measure. Um, so that's currently active and um, available to distribute. And then um, Bridget, you reminded me, um, we do have an open house on Friday and Saturday for the Veterans Memorial where folks can stop in and weigh in on um, design aspects for the Veterans uh Plaza. Um, and I think that is this Friday and Saturday on the Twalton Commons Lake, eleven thirty to one thirty. That's it.
All right, thank you. Counselor President Grimes?
I don't have any reports for this evening.
All right, uh, I just have a few here. Um, back on January twenty-sixth, uh, the Westside Economic Alliance had their board meeting. What was interesting was a gentleman representing their uh, trades, construction trades, that gave a presentation on uh, the amount of construction projects that are uh, either in process or are going to be envisioned here in the next year or two. And the struggle for housing for those folks who are going to do the construction. That uh, we have a lot of, you know, journeyman or journey people, uh, you know, in the trades coming into our region because all the construction, the first thing they find out is there's no, there is no housing or the housing is not affordable. And it's been particularly a struggle out in Hillsborough with Intel's expansion out there. And so a lot of folks coming into the region wanting to help out, you know, make a good wage, but they're struggling to find a place to live. So it's something that I had not heard of before, uh, that was put on our radar. And, you know, and another, you know, little bullet point under our challenges under housing is, you know, folks coming into the region for jobs and they can't find a place to live either due to uh, the capacity or affordability. Uh, on the ninth of February, the, I'm on the Subcommittee for Transportation for the Metro Mayor's Consortium. And we had an emergency meeting uh, to deal with some items that are at the legislature in terms of tolling. There is a senator who represents parts of the cities in Clackamas County who uh, would like to put it on the, have a joint resolution from uh, the Oregon Legislature that would not allow tolling unless it was approved by a vote, uh, the folks who are going to be impacted by that tolling. We ended up citing on, none of us have obviously a wild about tolling, but don't think this is a good idea. Um, so uh, you know, that's what elected officials are for and people gave me our opinions. We're all fighting on the same sheet of music here with uh, ODOT to get the things needed that we want for uh, the tolling program. Uh, but to put it on a ballot, uh, Mayor Gamba had a good point. Who's going to vote for increasing their cost of transportation? Who's going to vote for that? Um, and would limit our ability to do things in the future. It might be something that would bite us in the butt in the future if this was allowed uh, to progress. Uh, on Friday the eleventh, I sent you the notes of the Washington County Mayor's Zoom Lunch Meeting, uh, where Sheriff Pat Garrett and District Attorney Kevin Barton presented on some of the challenges they had both in the jail and the court system. So I asked you to take a look at that memo. And then today, uh, Mike McCarthy and I attended the Washington County Corning Committee uh, meeting. A lot of good meeting subjects did today. I sent you the PowerPoint from the M-Step Evaluation Criteria. The folks at Washington County heard all your opinions when they came and asked us what we thought should be uh, evaluation criteria for the M-Step Program. You'll notice some of those bullets address what we said. Uh, this is a draft. They're going to go through the next couple, three months to fin- uh, finish off that criteria, so more to come there. Our favorite ex-employee Garrett Pryor presented the latest and greatest uh, tolling plan and regional mobility. And I sent you those slides. Um, and you know, diversion was the big subject of discussion and when uh, ODOT will address it. And then there was a presentation, about a presentation from ODOT, uh, new acronym for you if you haven't seen it. The IIJA, which is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the federal dollars that are coming to Oregon. Uh, ODOT has a plan where about four hundred and twelve million of the dollars sent our way will be used for discretionary projects in ODOT. Uh, but they have to set aside about two hundred million of that for different dedicated programs. So we're looking at about two hundred and ten million dollars of uh, funds available for discretionary projects, not specifically earmarked throughout the state. And the first thing that popped in my head was ninety-nine W, that this is a long forgotten from the seventies. Ideally, it looks like it fits into their plan on a highway that needs maintenance in terms of uh, safety and climate action and for uh, you know, investment in a deteriorating facility. So we'll, we'll see, because I think it's going to be, you know, two hundred million dollars for the whole state isn't going to go far when everyone's competing for these dollars. So, but we want to make sure we're at the table and maybe team up with our four sister cities in the area to get some dollars sent to ninety-nine W to fix the long-term needs that we know it has to be addressed. Because that can get kicked down the, the uh, street, if you will, each time, you know, each, every time we get a one or two million dollar grant. But nothing that's going to put it over the finish line to get those uh, fixes done. And with that, that's all I have. So we're done a little early here. That's kind of nice. So we'll see you back at seven o'clock and we'll kick into our Valentine celebration of a city, full-on city council meeting tonight. of a city, full-on city council meeting tonight. We'll see you in a little bit.